Online. From Kenny.
And. They have emergencies. All right.
Yeah, sure.
The meeting has started at six o'clock. And I'm trying to turn my sound off, my apologies.
Do we do that by formal roll call vote, or can we do it consensus?
Um, why don't we have a roll call on it? Commissioner McLeod. Yes. Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Wallace. Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we've done roll call. And um. We're gonna go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Would you like to?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone that has something to discuss tonight? That is not on the agenda. This would be the time to come forward. If you have issues or concerns that are not on the agenda. Okay. Um.
Question. Sir, it now? Um, not on the agenda. It, I received a letter about serving lots being, is that on the agenda?
That's on the agenda. We'll be discussing that.
Okay.
And I'll explain how this all works here in just a minute. So, uh, we do not have anyone that has concerns that does not pertain to this meeting. Okay, so. Um.
This is for when we start.
See that? Okay.
I'm not right yet.
Okay.
That's true. When we open up the public hearing or just before.
Okay. Um. We need to go ahead and approve the minutes. Um. Are there any commissioners that would like to, um, say something about the minutes?
Will they be approved?
Okay, does anybody see anything wrong with the minutes? Uh, second.
Okay, me.
Um. On the one that says page slash three. If you go down to the, um, paragraph that says Mike Foreman. And you go down to the second of the last, the 13th street, and you go down to the, um. The end of the sentence of the count back three, there should be a T between S.T.A.T.E.S.
Um, yeah.
I didn't get a cancellation. Either for the ten, the ten. Uh, the meeting that we have. Or the one before that. It was canceled. Um, see. It's like there was one other thing and you're having trouble finding it. Cause I read half my package. In person and half online. I guess it's not that important. Okay, we'll just go ahead and skip that part. Um.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. The minutes have been approved. It is. Thank you. Um. We have a scheduled matter for a public hearing. Um. And so it's about, uh. Cameo Vista preliminary plat approval. And this is the part where I explain how the meeting works. Um.
You want me to read it?
I can, I can read it one or the other.
If you want to, um, I can't see it. Thank you.
The chairman declares the public hearing open at the direction of the planning commission. The secretary shall announce the ground rules, time limits for speaking, sign up sheets, submitting exhibits if any for the hearing. The secretary shall ask the members of the hearing body the following. Does anyone have an interest in the property or the application at issue, or do they own property in close proximity of the property subject to the application? Does anyone stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of the hearing? Can the members hear and consider the application in a fair and objective manner? Has anyone engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the application? If so, place on the record the substance of any such communications so that interested parties have the opportunity to rebut the communications. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge on appearance of fairness grounds? Participation in the matter by any member of the hearing body? Please include the reasons for the request. Any member disqualified based on appearance of fairness grounds must leave the hearing room and must not participate further concerning the application. There will be a review of the application by the planning staff. The secretary will give, gives an oath to those wishing to testify. Um, the applicant's testimony, testimony from agencies or individuals requested to be at the hearing. Proponents' testimony, opponents' testimony, applicants' rebuttal, clarification of public statements. Uh, planning commission discussion of evidence. Presented and the application. Among, this will be among the planning commission members only. Members may ask questions to members in the audience to obtain additional information, but members may not provide factual information. Persons other than the members must provide evidence. If the planning commission determines they have all the information they need for their decision, they will then close the public hearing to further public testimony. They may then complete the findings of fact or continue the meeting to a later date for a decision. If the planning commission at this time determines they need additional information, then they may be. May by motion, continue the public hearing to another date, time and place. Approve, deny, or modify a proposal, a motion must be made in seconds. Any such most motion must state the specific reasons for approval, denial, or tabling. The vote is then recorded in the minutes.
Copy that a little bit.
Yep.
Cause that's how I read this. Okay, thank you very much. Um. Ms. Wallace isn't here, but I've been in the chair of commissioner lots of times, and so. I don't know if everyone understood that what we'll do is, um. We have a sign up sheet. And you sign your name and your address, and the people that are, um. Doing the paperwork for the zoning come up first. And then anyone in favor of that comes up. And does the same thing, name, address, where they live, and speaks their mind. No one will interrupt the other party. And then when they're gone, the people who are opposed come up and explain. Put their name down, their address, and what the problem is. Um, then the first people will be able to rebut that. But we're not gonna have any talking back and forth. While people are doing their chip, their, um. There's, uh.
Testimony.
Testimony, thank you. So, um, we can go ahead and start with that.
Thank you. Members of the commission. Uh, tonight we have preliminary plat twenty-four dash oh two. This is the applicant owner is Cameo Vista Corporation. And they're located at three three one Valley Mall Parkway, East Wenatchee. The site location for this preliminary plat. Is described as east of Desert Rose Terrace, north of Chris Avenue, and east of fourteenth street here in the city. Um, Benton County parcels, tax parcels are. There are, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. Um, beginning with one dash one eight nine seven dash three oh one dash one two five two dash zero zero nine. Um, number two is one dash, excuse me, one eight nine seven dash three oh one dash one two five two dash oh. Excuse me, zero one zero. Uh, the third is one dash one eight nine seven dash three oh one dash one two five two. Dash zero one one. The fourth is one dash eight nine seven. Uh, dash three hundred dash zero 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 one dash zero one three. And the fifth parcel is, uh, one dash one eight nine seven dash three oh three dash zero zero one two dash zero one one. Uh, the zoning for this property is R two medium density residential. Uh, the proposal, uh, is a preliminary plat approval to divide three, or actually it's five lots. Uh, totaling three point seven acres. Into thirteen new lots for residential development. And I will proceed by reading off some of the findings of fact. Um, pertaining to the property development. Um. Access, the site has access from, uh, from the north along fourteenth street. And from the south of Chris Avenue. Utilities, street water, sewer, storm drainage, street lights, irrigation and dry utilities. Shall be designed by a licensed engineer and approved by the city engineer. And utility companies with specific authority. All such improvements shall be constructed in accordance, accordance with the city's municipal code and state regulations. Uh, land use and zoning, the surrounding properties are zoned as follows. To the north. Properties are zoned R two medium density, density residential. There is a couple of parcels that are R three, which are high density residential. And further to the west is C one light industrial. Uh, properties to the south, east and west are zone R two medium density residential. The comprehensive plan designates the site for medium density housing. The site is zone R two again, which applies to medium density land use intent. By allowing between two and seven dwellings units per acre. And that is the existing zoning. Uh, environmental determination Benton City is a lead agency for this project. Uh, the applicant did submit a SEPA checklist. And, uh. We submitted it to the Department of Ecology, uh, for the required time allotments. Uh, we also sent that at. To all the regulating agencies. That are involved in this. Um. The comprehensive plan again, this, uh, the city development regulations and other information. A mitigation determination of non-servicants was issued for this project on November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, there was one, uh, letter, um. Which is standard, uh, from the Department of Ecology. And it read, uh, if any inadvertent discovery protocol for potential discovery of cultural or historic artifacts. Must be prepared and submitted to the city before any ground disturbing permits are issued. So if they do find something out there, we're supposed to hear about it. A little bit of the history on this proposal. Uh, this may seem familiar to those who were on the commission for a while. But on March twentieth, two thousand eighteen, the city council adopted resolution. Number two thousand eighteen dash five approving eleven lot subdivision for the subject property. Subsequently, the owner of the property did not submit a final plat. Within the allotted time in accordance with chapter seventeen point one six point two two zero. Uh, which is entitled final plat application. A final plat shall be submitted to the city council for approval within five years of the date of preliminary plat approval. And that went by, and that's why they're here tonight. Um, resubmitting this application. We have to hear this again. Um. Okay, let's see. Staff findings, state law, RCW fifty-eight dot seventeen dot one one zero, and the Benton City Municipal Code requires city to develop. Findings of fact, how? This proposed subdivision will protect and enhance the safety. And general welfare of the community. The following is a list of proposed findings of fact. This, uh, the site is designated residential by the comprehensive plan. The residential land use category contemplates different density levels on zoning. Again, the site is zoned R two, which applies to medium density land use intent. Which is again allows between two and seven dwelling units per acre. The project proposes a density of four point two dwelling units per acre. And the plat is designed for residential housing. Uh, parks and open space, schools, the subdivision does not include land dedicated for parks purposes. Therefore fees in lieu of be paid as required by section seventeen points seventeen. Uh, point thirty-six. Uh, safe travel and walking conditions. The proposed plats includes adequate streets and sidewalks, curbs, gutter. Um, that are will be required to be installed and constructed to current city standards. Um. Standards of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Um, adequate provision of municipal services, all lots when the plat are required to provide water, sewer and other utilities. Uh, provision of housing for state residents, the proposed plat, uh, again contains thirteen suburban lots. Providing the opportunity for construction of thirteen new single family dwelling units or more multiple family units. Um. Adequate air and light, the maximum lot coverage limitations, building height restrictions and building setbacks will be ensure. Sure to adequate movement of air and light is available to each lot. Uh, proper access and travel, the plat will be developed to city standards and ensure proper access is maintained to each lot. Connections will be made to fourteenth street and Chris Avenue. I believe that is summarizes. Um. The application and the staff summary, if there are questions. Um. I can, I'm here to answer those. Again, this is R two, which. Uh, the minimum lot size is seven thousand two hundred square feet. Uh, the lots there range between this, the minimum to ten thousand nine hundred square feet. For the various lots.
I wondered how they got went from eleven houses to thirteen. That's something that I read in there and. I remember talking about a pathway up the side. And I don't recall, it wasn't in here, and I wondered if that's just something that. Is off the, the, um. Plan or? Just something that I remember that we talked about because we want all of those walkways to be conjoined all the way through town. And so I wondered if that was some sort of consideration. When they, uh, filed their papers or?
The, um, they will have to meet standard, uh, road design standards from the municipal code, which require curb, gutter, sidewalk. So that will be throughout the subdivision and any lots fronting on like fourteenth street. Um. Because of. The city's, uh, financial concerns. Um, we're not really in favor of the small one acre, two acre lots for. Um, parks. It's very expensive for the city to maintain those. For crews to go out on a weekly basis, mow the lawns, water, that sort of thing. We'd rather have an in lieu of payment. Uh, so that monies can go to a larger park. We're currently under, um. The state, uh, guidelines for, um, parks and open space in this city. Um, so we're looking at developing larger park sizes that, that are more. Efficient, efficient and effective to maintain. By city crews. And that's our biggest concern and the prices of. Um, playground equipment and irrigation has gone through the roof.
Yes.
And so we have to be very careful on, um, how we're looking at developing these new parks. And so that is the very carefully consideration when we, we look at this.
Yeah, um, I, I agree with you on that. Um, I think my question was, is up that easement from Chris on F and around if, if. Somehow we can think about that in the future. I don't know if there's an easement right in there or not. Uh, for, uh, path down the road.
Okay.
I think that that is important to the public. To keep that going.
Okay.
I don't know if that would be a city concern or something that we need to think of in the future. Cause we, there's one on Chris. That used to be canal.
Mm-hmm.
There's one up on Chris and it goes all the way to fourteen. And I know that we're having sidewalks, which is wonderful. Uh, plan, but I wondered if on the, um. East end of that property, if there was any idea, you could talk with the council about it, I guess. Um, about, uh. One of those bike house going up through there at some point. See if there's an easement if we have work for that.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Certainly consider that. Uh, you asked the question and how come there, they were eleven lots, now they thirteen. They realigned some of the cul-de-sacs there. That allowed extra space to accommodate. Each lot, a new lot.
I noticed that, you know, it's kind of an awkward law, uh, acreage anyway. So there's no way they can have it perfectly square on a bend.
Mm-hmm.
And have it both of that.
Question. Is there any, uh, talk or concern about the safety of children? Cause I imagine there are going to be children there. Uh, a requirement for fence along Chris and fourteenth. Where they won't be running out into the street.
Okay, the fence. Uh, that's another good idea. I'll certainly suggest that they may have that. Do we, JB is, do we have other people online? The applicant was supposed to be.
There's nobody else.
Hmm. Cause they were intending to come through on the Zoom.
Yeah.
Um, maybe she didn't get hooked up. Okay. Okay.
Okay, well, that is a good, uh, idea. I know that. Uh, we, we don't necessarily put fences down. Um, the west side where the sidewalks are. But I could see that if it's gonna divide, uh. The, um, housing, uh, building as you go as they view each other. Usually that's when we put fences in. Between them.
Okay.
Okay. Um. I, other than that, I don't have anything to do. Or other, okay, um, then I think we should, um, start the. The hearing. So, we're in the part, and we're gonna go ahead and start with, uh, anyone in favor of the development.
Um, like I said, the applicant was supposed to be online and.
Is there anything that you can be told? You know, I personally had trouble getting on, so. I, I had a lot of internet, uh, problems about an hour ago.
Um.
Is there anything that you could read that he has put forward or heard?
Uh, well, just the application. I can go over some more details of it, I guess. If you have questions.
Well, to me, it seemed cut and dried, but to the people in the audience that might not seem so cut and dried.
Well, maybe I can answer their questions and once they come up.
Okay.
Let's try that.
Okay, let's go ahead and stop that part. And let's go ahead and start with, um, people wanting to talk about the development. Go ahead. Members first.
You go first?
Yeah. State your name and your address.
I'm Ivan Howard.
Did you sign up?
Yeah, I can sign right there. I didn't put my address representing thirteen, I'm thirteen ten Chris. Right there on the corner. Uh. I have no problem with it. I, I, it's none of my business. Somebody bought that property off me and my mother and what they do with it's their concern. My concern is with this picture. Cause this picture shows a property line going right directly through the middle of my house. I'd like to know why.
That.
See that? That property line go right through my house.
Yeah, these are. This, this map is GIS map.
Can you go over and take a?
And.
Cause that, that, this place has been here since the fifties and my water meter sits right over there, so I know they didn't put the water meter and all that stuff on somebody else's property.
Is that something we need the engineer to look at?
Well, and I was gonna tell you, when they, when they sold, or when I sold this to them, they come out and they surveyed and they put a stake and we found the corner post. Okay, the little orange cap thing. And so it's, it's where it's supposed to be. I just wasn't sure if something had changed and.
No, they, this is considered, this is a geographic information system map.
Okay.
It's accurate within about fifteen to twenty feet.
Okay.
But I will make sure, um, that the applicant.
Most likely what happened is years ago, when they put this street in, they took a portion of this property on this side all the way down when they redone all this.
Uh-huh.
And I don't know if when they set the paperwork in there, maybe something happened and then they took the property line this direction instead of that. I don't know. Uh. But I, like I said, when they surveyed it, it was, it was where it's supposed to be, and we found it, but me and the guy doing the survey walked out there and I dug it up and everything, and we, we see where it's at. So I know where the property line is. I just wanna make sure that everybody else is on board with it. I don't mind sharing, but I don't wanna have a living room with my neighbors.
Sure, sure. And thanks for bringing that to our attention and, uh, I will mention that to. The developer there and we'll take that in consideration.
Okay.
I know this lady here too had a little bit of discrepancy on the lot size. Uh, one of your other neighbors there too, so.
Oh.
But thank you very much.
Yeah, like I said, it's, I, I, I hope it develops into something better than a big wheat patch out there.
Good night.
Hi, um, I'm Brittany Wilson. Uh, I live at five oh six Fourteenth Street. Um, my main concern is the same as his. Uh. I have. Uh, the same picture and obviously it cut through part of my shed and I get what you're saying that it might not be right, but there's also survey stakes out by my house. And if those survey stakes are where they're supposed to be, I'm good. But if they're not, then I'm in trouble because there's a septic tank back there, there's a well back there, there's irrigation all the way up to the end of the property line.
And that's on your land? Is it a shared well? Or is it your personal well?
That's a good question.
George, that's something that needs.
Probably your own personal one, but.
Probably, I mean, I believe it's my house, like the original farmhouse or something back in the day, so.
If some of that has to be, if it's on the land for the development and. City code, you have, it's gonna be removed, so that's something to really pin down.
Yeah, her, her parcel is really not involved in this development, but, uh. She is concerned about.
Yeah, so.
About this, the exact width of her property.
I just have infrastructure set up on, you know, irrigation and all that stuff, so the lines are kind of.
Flurred.
Yeah, and as long as somebody tells me, yeah, wherever the stakes are that you have are good, then I'm okay, but right now I'm just a little freaked out by the whole thing. I, I'm with him. I want it developed. I don't wanna patch a chimney out behind my house either, especially during fire season, so.
So can you make an overlap?
Yeah.
To make sure that she's not being disrupted.
Thank you.
Did you get ahold of, or to Karen?
They called me, they never called back.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you in the city or the county?
She's, uh, she's in the city, yeah.
In the city.
Yeah.
And I was, when, when I was doing code enforcement, it was county that you've got that little house on fourteen, right?
Yeah, little one, yeah.
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 That was county property, just her lot alone and the lady across the street.
As she's sitting now, yeah.
I've never, I don't remember ever annexing her address.
Well, we'll look into this.
All right. Okay, I know where that's.
Interesting.
Yeah, and as we have us, and this is part of her house, she passed away a long time ago. You know, it's sort of warrants.
Okay, but I'll help you with that. We'll look into that.
So.
Keep working.
Yeah, um it's that. Brian, can you over this side?
Okay.
Okay.
Um. We'll get, did you have a question or?
No, I I live on Kendall, so I wanted to hear this.
Okay.
To say, is there anyone else that has anyone, anything to say before we let the gentleman speak? Okay, sir, it's your turn.
Is that, his name is Jeff? That's right.
I wonder if his mute thing is off. It's on on the bottom left side of your computer screen. I mean, his.
Is on.
Jeff, can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
No.
His phone's off.
We can't hear you.
Need to turn this phone on.
Now.
Yeah, I have to turn it on.
We can't hear you.
Oh.
Now we can't see you.
Now we gotta see you.
See if I can turn him on manually.
Okay.
Nope, just ask me to mute me.
He needs to unmute himself.
Hmm. He's unmuted himself, yeah.
You have. He can hear us.
You have your computer muted. We cannot hear you. Thank you. I've started with this when I travel and lead the meetings, that's why.
Can you write on that green board?
Well, he he can, he can hear us. He just has to unmute his phone.
Oh, he's got somebody to help him.
I usually call my. Son, help me, help me.
My house would be my little granddaughter.
The mute button is usually on the bottom left side of your screen.
Yeah, but I think he's using his phone.
I think he's on his phone.
How about now?
Here we go. Now we got you.
Okay, so they finally came up and it said tap to speak.
Can you turn your sound up, sir?
Uh yeah, I have my sound up all the way.
Okay.
I'll just speak louder. Can you hear me?
Can you say something?
Oh, Tess, Tess.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Michelle, do you just wanna kind of summarize where we are and you can?
Well, right now, we started without you, hoping that through. And uh mostly the the uh citizens have mentioned uh. Property lines and they're worried that uh. Your, their property line surveys are correct, so it doesn't go through someone's house or onto someone's property.
Yes, I understand.
Or just written that down and those are gonna be noted to make sure that everything's correct.
Can I ask a question uh to the homeowners? My question would be, once we have it surveyed, um should we notify them and have their own survey or come out too? Or how would we handle this? So we're all in accordance. I mean, I I don't wanna upset the homeowners.
Well, I I know where my property lines at.
Oh, okay, good.
Guys, well, we, I'm, me and my mother is the one that sold it to you folks.
Oh, okay. Oh, I feel much better now. I know who I'm talking to. Thank you.
Yes, Ivan Howard.
Uh, yeah, okay.
Somebody come out and survey when you first bought it.
Yes, sir.
Uh yeah, and I went out, cause they come up and asked me if I knew where the marker was, so I went out and showed them where it was at and dug it up so they can see it.
Oh, good.
The the photographs now in the paperwork show the property line going directly through the middle of my house. And I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, cause according to this picture, I'm gonna have neighbors sitting right next to me.
Oh, no, we, you know, yeah, we don't wanna go through the middle of your property. That wouldn't work. Never get a building permit or get it recorded like that. But no, I understand.
Yeah, and I I noted that the GIS maps that we use. Are accurate within fifteen, twenty feet, so.
Okay.
Um we have to deal with that.
Okay.
Um, so we just wanted to note that in the minutes.
Okay.
And that we can, you know, try to work around that, but probably that property line doesn't go through his. His house, but it, you know, it's. We have to take a look at it.
Yes, I understand.
There's also a lady named Brittany.
Yes.
Bro, go ahead and speak, Brittany. Um.
I was just concerned because I'm on uh, again, the picture's a little off and it looks like it cut through my backyard and I have a well and a septic tank. Irrigation through there. So as long as the property lines are where my stakes are, they're in the yard from when I bought the house, then I'm okay. But if it's closer to my house than I expect, we're gonna have issues we don't want.
And she lives at five oh six fourteenth street.
Yes, well, I talked to the engineering firm and I I don't wanna cause any uh heartache for you. Um they suggested that when the meeting tonight that I talk to you and let you know that if. Uh what you said is inaccurate and once it's um say resurveyed or surveyed and we see where the actual corners are. And let's say unfortunately your septic field's encroaching, then they recommended that we come up with an agreement that we would not disturb that. And that once the home someday was sold, or if the city said, hey, it's time to hook up to the uh sewer. Then uh everybody would be in agreeance, so, cause we don't wanna create any harm to you. And I kind of think that puts us in a gray area, cause we don't have the markers and everything uh in agreeance with, you say, two different survey firms. So we don't wanna cause any harm to you.
At the meeting, we are in kind of a gray area where their map and their own lines. Because their ordinances about septics and wells, so that is something that will be taken into consideration.
Yes.
Eddie.
Mm hmm.
Is there anything that you would like to tell us about your development? I noticed when I first read it about five years ago.
Yes.
Eleven houses and and not thirteen. So does that have something to do with the cul-de-sacs and the shape of the lot?
Yeah, it was the shapes and then I believe uh Michelle told me the the zoning, I think, was gonna go to a higher density, I believe. Um I believe that was why we redesigned it. Um and plus it helps keep the affordability. Um I don't know if you looked up our history and Wenatchee and everything, but. We like to build affordable homes that look nice and uh create nice neighborhoods. And so the main thing is Michelle had called me a while back and said, uh I believe something had changed in your ordinances. Uh I believe it was the lot size, if I recall right from her, that um.
Pleasant being for the record. Cause I'm.
You know, his Michelle, his.
Uh Michelle with the engineering firm.
To understand that, that you and I were.
No, no, you and I weren't. No, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
That's okay.
That's his design firm.
So the designers, I would say the designing firm had called me a a while back and said. We could get more to more lots. And we want you to think about it because with costs rising, you know, so high. And we know that you're an affordable builder, that you like to build affordable homes. That would you be willing? And they showed me a layout and I said, well, as long as we feel that would be okay with the city and things would be meet, you know, codes and everything. Yes, I I would like to do that. And so that's how that came about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitors that wanna ask Jeff any questions? No. Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Uh to the homeowners, um I would invite them uh to talk to the former mayor of Rock Island, Randy. Uh he moved on, he went into another position. We have an impeccable record with people. If you check the state of Washington, we have no marks against us. And so when I say we wanna build affordable homes, I don't mean junk. I mean nice looking affordable homes. You could go through. Any of our neighborhoods just out of Wenatchee or east Wenatchee or um things we've done, I think you'd be very happy. Or if you want me to send some pictures, our office to show you what I'm talking about. Uh the homeowners that I'm speaking to right now, I'd be more than happy to do that, just to ease your minds. I don't want you to think we're gonna come in there and build slop and ruin your. Uh security of your homes or anything.
I think that the city would appreciate that.
Okay, uh we'll all call the office and tell them.
Are these stick built or are these factory homes?
Dick built.
Dick built, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, that would help uh the council and the city workers to know more about what. Is actually transpiring so they can help the community.
Okay, I'll I'll do that.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Um, does anyone else on the council or on the commission have any questions? Okay, well. And are we about uh close?
We can close the hearing.
Okay, we'll close the hearing. And we'll go ahead and um have have a vote, you know, follow on. Yes, everyone.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion has carried. Six forty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're officially approved by the planning commission.
Thank you very much and thank you homeowners for speaking with me.
Yeah.
I can hope I don't have to repaint my house to keep up with you guys.
Thanks, thanks again, everybody, and I'll do it right away, what I said.
I I think the planner's report is in your packet.
We still have a hearing going on here. We need to come to order if we're not done. Okay, thank you for coming both of you. Okay, I think it's time that Dirk is gonna go over the planning report.
Um, okay, we do have a couple of. New short plat applications that have come in. One is off of twelve ten Grace Court. Um dividing uh into three new lots. Uh one one oh seven thirteenth street, a short plat into two lots. Uh we just heard the preliminary plat for this project here off of fourteenth. And Chris. Uh we do have a application for another preliminary plat. Off on North Ba- Babs Avenue. And this is a submittal for forty-six lot preliminary plat subdivision. And it's on thirteen point two seven acres. Uh it is zoned R two. Uh we're currently reviewing this. Um, we submitted the SEPA checklist to Department of Ecology. Uh we did receive a couple of comments back. One from the tribe, uh Yakima Tribe. Said that this might have cultural areas of significance on the property. As well as historical significance, and that's by the State Department of um. Historical uh review, and so there are some conditions on this, so we still have to further. Further discuss this. Uh portion of the western property that they have too is in the floodplain. And they noted that on their proposed plat. So these are all items that we're gonna have to take a much closer look at. Um currently working with Benton County Planning. And with the other uh tri-cities, um cities, working on policies and review for. Urban growth of. Boundary changes. Uh we have until May. To get that in, there's significant um work that needs to be done on that. Where they're going to do like a housing study. Uh we have to come up with a capital facilities plan. To show that cities capable of providing water, sewer, roads to these areas that are in the urban growth area. Uh we may wanna be able to swap some of the properties outside of our current urban growth area. That are in the floodplain or have other issues. With some other lands that might be better served by the city.
When you say swap them, what exactly do you mean?
Take them out of the urban growth boundary that is designated right now.
Okay.
And consider, the county has to approve this.
Right.
Um. But these are some of the pro, I'm not gonna go individual properties right now, but we are taking a look at this. So there are no guarantees of where this is gonna go, because the county commissioners have to. To approve it and after this data and research goes into it and they will make a decision.
Well, I think it's a wise request, cause we have really been through a lot with the floodplain. And avoiding the floodplain would always be advisable.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm. So more to come on this, probably I'll give you an update on in March on this, once we uh. Uh Kana Engineering is uh as a planner on this. And we do have a planning grant that we're working with on this too, so uh more to come on this. That's about it, but there's a lot of uh. Activity uh from prospective developers and folks on the build here inside the city. Uh so more to come on that. Looking for more folks to that are interested in the downtown area, if you sure can use some help down there, so.
Yes.
Nice businesses.
Yep.
What about with Dutch boys there or Dutch brothers?
Dutch Brothers, this body issued a conditional use for them. Uh their plans were approved, they just haven't started digging out there yet. You know, it was all hurry up and wait.
I hope they uh get ground.
Yeah. Uh I know a lot of people here expressing feeling, get get move on here.
Do you have anything you can tell us about? An improvement for downtown, any ideas, or is that just pending?
Maybe a new ice cream, maybe a new ice cream parlor.
I I love ice cream.
A real good one, my junk.
But people are looking, um saying, you know, what can we do here? What are the uses that are allowed and?
Hot dog stands coming in someplace.
Eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll be a hit, I think, daddy was a hit, so I think they will be too. That is good, that's a good, we need to have a hot dog stand, everyone loved it.
Uh see, the other thing is um. The next regularly scheduled meeting is set for Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. Um, as you recall, the meetings in November and December were changed to accommodate the holidays and stuff, so. Now we're trying to go back to a regular scheduled meeting.
It'd be great to have a uh.
Calendar?
Country and.
Oh, country.
Because. I have yet to be called on a council meeting. I've never been canceled and. I've rerouted planes and all kinds of stuff for some of these meetings. And so I really wanna know, even if it's a text message.
Does the city have your phone numbers?
Yeah, I imagine they do. I gave them every month too, but it'd be nice for us to have a phone tree so that. We can contact uh or be contacted.
Okay.
Contact each other, you know, then we need to not be here.
I thought you sent an email.
I did.
I didn't, I didn't see.
She has difficulty receiving that, so, but we can, we'll accommodate you.
Okay, thank you. Is if that's all you have. Um, why don't we go ahead and adjourn the meeting?
Okay.
At six fifty.
Great. Thank you very much for sharing.